Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is our middle school representative speak out, which all school committee members look very, very forward to. School Committee Man Chris Collins sends his regrets. He's unable to attend due to a family aspects and I know Attorney Peter Murphy might run a little late here. Before we start, who's gonna win the Super Bowl?
Patriots.
Patriots. Anybody for the Eagles here? You make it interesting, we'll keep it that way.
There's two of us.
Oh, okay. I know that Zenetti Montessori Middle School's in the house. They're accompanied by their great Principal Tara Clark who's in the house, Frankie Gentile, Salim Austin, Ariana Ali, Noah, Noah Bouye. Oh yeah, Noah, how are you? Come on down. If I pronounced your name wrong, please correct me.
Good evening Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick and school committee members. My name is Ariana Ali and I'm an eighth grade student at Zenetti. Tonight I'm here to talk to you about the Black History Story Mapping Project we are working on in history. Our class partnered with Mr. Collins, a professor at Westfield State and Dr. Tinson from Amherst College to learn more about slavery and famous abolitionists. We also went on a trip to Westfield State where Mr. Collins taught us to use the mapping software that we now use in the classroom. Our teacher has been working with Mr. Collins to get us each an abolitionist to study. There are twenty-eight students in the class and we each got a list of famous abolitionists that we got to choose from. We each decided on one person. For example, I chose Sojourner Truth. She was a very important woman who was oppressed by slavery. She eventually escaped to a better life with her infant daughter. After we decided on who we were going to do our project on, we started researching. We had about four questions we had to answer. However, we had to be very precise and detailed so that our project would sound age-appropriate and not repetitive with our wording and phrasing. The following questions are what we were told to include in our project. Write five important facts about your person's life. How did your person contribute to the struggle against slavery and injustice and to advance the cause of freedom and democracy in the United States? List five important places in the life of your person. These places should correspond to the places of the events you listed above. And lastly, what are some of your personal feelings and reactions about your person after learning about his or her life? Based on the information we used, this website called Story Maps to create a type of presentation where we could tell the story of the life of our abolitionists and the difference they made in the world. We listed important things they did, where they did it, and what difference that made in the world. Many of the abolitionists made ties to Massachusetts and even to Springfield. One abolitionist, John Brown, lived in Torrington, Connecticut, and gave a speech in Springfield that got many people to follow his movement. The Underground Railroad was a very important part of slavery and part of it took place right here in Massachusetts. The people we are learning about were mostly all slaves at one point in their life, so they would try to escape to the Underground Railroad, which helped them to escape to Canada where slavery was illegal. The Underground Railroad ran through Pennsylvania, Canada, Maryland, Massachusetts, and New York. It was not an actual railroad, but it was basically stops in people's homes and churches where runaway slaves could eat, sleep, rest, and be protected. In conclusion, it is a great thing that we have the chance to learn about these things at a semi-early age, also that we got to travel to Westfield State and work with college professors in our history class. Thank you.
Ariana, nice job. Ariana, we just had today our Black Heritage Flag Raising Event here and it was very well timed. And if you'd like, on your way out, if you go to the main lobby of City Hall downstairs, there was portraits of John Brown and other famous African-Americans, Black Americans. John Brown, of course, was an individual that St. John's Church, but John Simpson did that. And John Brown was well ahead of his time being a white American at that time. So there's big portraits in the entry area of City Hall you can take a look at too.
And he actually lived in Springfield for a while as well, down on Franklin Street. Yeah.
And also, Mr. Mayor, they can actually get a tour of the Underground Railroad downtown.
That's right. That's right. Very good. Say hi to your dad, by the way, too. Go ahead.
Good evening, school committee. My name is Noah and I'm in the eighth grade. Today I will explain a little more about our story mapping project.
Say your name, say your name loud and proud. I want everybody to hear it.
My name is Noah Bouye and I'm an eighth grader at Zenetti. Today we'll explain a little more about our story mapping project. This project is important and meaningful because it introduces students to a new presentation software. Story Maps allows you to make a presentation about someone or something using maps. The maps can show important places in a person's life or landmarks in a city. We use Story Maps as a tool to research and present research about famous local abolitionists. I did my project on William Cooper Nunn, whom I never heard of before the Story Maps project, but now I know that he ended segregation in public schools, performance halls, and other public places in Boston. Another student in my class did their project on John Brown, an abolitionist from Springfield who helped lead the nation on a course to the Civil War with his raid on Harper's Ferry. On Saturday, February tenth, from twelve to three P.M., there will be a Black History Celebration at my school. We will present some information there and I encourage the school committee to come.
Thank you. Tell your dad it's your Super Bowl, too. I'm at another event that day. Loud and proud, say your name.
Good evening. My name is Salim. I am the sixth grade and a member of the Zenetti Student Council. One of the activities we are doing this year is raising money for the students in our school who have came from Puerto Rico due to Hurricane Maria. We decided to sell bracelets. First, we decided on the colors Royal Blue with White writing. Next, we decided on what the bracelet should say. Students in Springfield supporting Puerto Rico. We also decided to put a logo on the Puerto Rican flag on it. Beautiful flowers were sent home and we began selling them at lunchtime on January sixteenth. We finished our sale Friday, January twenty-sixth. We began with three hundred bracelets and have about fourteen left. So far, we have raised three hundred and five dollars as a few donations remain. Money raised will go help provide supplies for these students through Springfield School Volunteers. We would like to thank teacher in our building, Mrs. Ryan, for donating all the bracelets. Do you have any questions? If anyone would like to purchase a bracelet, we have a few left. Thank you for your time.
You had a great article in the paper, I believe, yesterday. You tell Kay Lani, Sharif Marshall, my little pal, that I said hello. You all did a tremendous job. I sent a little note there, but thank you for thinking of our brothers and sisters in Puerto Rico. Great, great job. Frank's a neighbor. How are you, Frank?
Good.
I see Dad here.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Frank Gentile and I am an eighth grader at Zenetti Montessori School. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about Project Three Fifty-One, which is a program where kids throughout Massachusetts are gathered to help adults and kids in Boston who do not have the food and clothing that they need. This year, I was nominated by my principal, Ms. Clark, and my English and history teacher, Ms. Shea. This was a great honor. This was a great honor and honestly, I was pretty surprised. I had never even heard of this program. I was both nervous and excited to be taking part in this. I understood how special this was and that few opportunities like this are given to kids in my area. The service day took place last Sunday, January twenty-eighth. We started with a warm welcome by the Project Three Fifty-One alumni. We then proceeded into the John F. Kennedy Museum and Library. We took a short tour of the museum and saw a short film of a few very important moments in history. It included speeches and the inauguration. Then, we were assigned a group and we got to meet our new groupmates and leader. Our leader was a Project Three Fifty-One alumni named Matthew Fleming. My group's hero was Thaddeus Miles. We actually got to meet him, which was pretty cool, because some of the other heroes were either not able to be there that day or not alive. He's an activist and director for cheaper housing so people can have homes. He starts fundraisers to help out people with this need and is usually working in Boston. After we met him, the governor and the first lady had a speech about the program and how awesome and important this opportunity is for everybody. After this, me, my group, and a few other groups were sent to the MLK School in Boston. Here, we helped paint murals and quotes to be hung throughout the school. We repainted walls in and around the cafeteria. We also helped to make senior citizen kits, clothing kits, hygiene kits, and food kits. These will be sent out around Boston to help other people in need to stay healthy and warm. After this, we came back to the library and had a celebration of the day's work and then went home. This really meant a lot to me because I know that many kids and adults throughout Boston will be touched and helped because of our hard work. I will continue these acts by being a leader in and around my school and city and anywhere else that a leader is required. I am also looking forward to the spring service reunion and fall service, which are all part of the Project Three Fifty-One service. Thank you for listening and a special thanks to the school committee, Mayor Sarno, and Superintendent Warwick for hosting us.
Great job, Frank. STEM Middle Academy's in the house. I see they're accompanied by Principal Louis Martinez, Ms. Jamie Carnes, Mr. Chris McCarthy, Ms. Ruth Mahoney are the club advisors. And in the house is Daniel Plana, Jakari Torres, Julian Wilson. If I pronounce your name wrong, correct me. And I can't even say "come on down." You're like, "I did okay, I got a thumbs up." Sometimes I don't get thumbs ups, you know, being mayor. Go right ahead.
Okay, so I'm just gonna introduce and give a shout out to Principal Martinez over there for being very supportive of us. As well as Mr. John Alphen here, he has been a pretty much inexhaustible resource.
Mr. Recycling, Mr. Green, yeah? Okay.
Absolutely. All right.
Good evening, first of all. Our motivation to make the earth a cleaner, greener, and more self-sustaining planet for the next generation.
Please tell me your name loud and proud.
My name is Julian Wilson. Good evening.
All right. Very good, Julian.
Good afternoon. My name is Denzel Clark and I'm here to talk about the structure of the Green Team. Green Team is all volunteer and led by the students of STEM from all grade levels. Principal Martinez, Mr. Joan Alphen, Ms. Mahoney, Mr. McCarthy, Ms. Cairns, and Mr. Hagerty and staff support the student leaders in our decisions. The entire faculty supports the Green Team action in the classrooms and cafeteria and it's not just the Green Team that's involved. Everybody in the school participates in this by going to lunch and composting and recycling everything they can. We make sure that we keep our school mean, green, and clean.
Nice job.
Hello, my name is Daniel Plana.
So before detox, I just want to point out that we did include a few pictures of STEM Green Team in action. So on the right side here, we have our hydroponic garden. To the left of that, we have tomatoes and pepper plants that we grow in our garden from the conference that Denzel just mentioned. We have some pictures of the support staff and students participating during lunch that Denzel just mentioned.
Hello, my name is Daniel Plana and I'll be talking about our everyday procedures and successes. Emily Fable, statewide Green Team Program Administrator, said STEM is one of the two best school sites out of three hundred-plus schools in Massachusetts for Green Team activities. Some of our highlights from STEM are composting salad bar waste, recycling in all classrooms and in all offices, food donations to local community shelters, onsite solar panel hookup, organic material maintained by students and fed with waste and compost collected from our classrooms. We are approved to be the first SBS building to switch from Styrofoam lunch trays to biodegradable cardboard trays.
Nice job.
Hello, and my name is Jakari Torres. I am going to read over some of our goals of our STEM team. We go with composting, reducing, and recycling things in our classrooms as well as garden and hydroponics. Our goal is to have for every one pound of trash to be diverted to eight pounds of compostable material and to be able to reduce the amount of waste that makes it into our landfills and to be able to make healthier soil for the STEM garden for healthier vegetables. We would also like to reduce waste by having two water bottle fillers installed and to be able to reduce the number of plastic bottles that are being recycled. We also want to be able to switch from Styrofoam lunch trays to compostable cardboard trays. STEM is also trying to have electric dryers instead of paper towels as well as to reduce waste from paper towels. We also are reducing the waste created in our classrooms and we want to educate our guests, friends, and families about using the recycling process to improve our communities and society. We also want to make the world a better place. With our garden and hydroponics, we are able to produce enough healthy vegetables for us to share with our community and to grow as many vegetables as we need to create healthier meals in a kitchen as well as to produce healthy eating habits.
Nice job, Jakari. Thank you, Jakari.
Hello, my name is Cameron Francis.
Cameron, good to see you again. You did a good job at the mentoring thing. Very, very good job. If you play chess with this kid, you're in trouble. I'm a checkers player. Good to see you, Cameron.
These are our goals and accomplishments. We have completed six out of twelve of our goals.
We have six in progress right now that will need the help of the school committee and Springfield, but we can definitely make those happen.
Right.
Very good. Another neighborhood kid. All right. Thank you, Cameron. Thank you, STEM Middle Academy. Did you bring any peppers at all? Pickled peppers, anything? No?
Seasonal.
Seasonal, okay. I don't know if you pickled any at all. Thank you. Well, Balliet Middle School's in the house. Kaia Boyd and Donovan Marsh, they're accompanied by Sarita Gravel, the assistant principal. Come on down.
My name is Kaia and I'm here to talk about how Balliet has changed me. When I first came to Balliet, I was like a really troubled kid. I got in trouble a lot, suspended a lot, and the staff at Balliet has taught me that I shouldn't let anger get in the way of me having a successful school year. That's it.
You're doing... Way to go, Kaia. Short and sweet and that you're doing well. That's good. That's good. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Donovan Marsh and I guess I was forced to come talk about my school. Good, only obviously, but I'm a seventh grader at Balliet Middle School and I guess I'm going to tell you about my experience there. The teachers are hard and all, but they are a wonderful influence on the students, especially my ELA teacher, Ms. McKenzie. She has helped me change my grade from a D+ to a B now.
Right.
I feel the school works on your past and tries to support you so you can do better or improve so you don't make the same mistakes in the future. Another thing that makes this school good is that the teachers don't hold grudges. I've done disrespectful and terrible things, but the next day, the teachers still come in and greet you and smile at you. Ms. Begley, right there, is one of the nicest teachers. She's known for giving out snacks and not kicking out of class as much as the other teachers. I appreciate the offer and opportunity of coming up to speak to you guys tonight. Yeah.
Good job.
Nice job. Thank you, Ms. Begley. The apple doesn't fall too far away from the tree. Dan County, okay. Springfield Public Day Middle School's in the house and they're accompanied by Linda Singer, Assistant Principal, Brianna Clancy, teacher, and coming down is Ethan Resto and Michael Swanigan. If I pronounce it wrong, Swanigan, please correct. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Michael Swanigan. Today, I will be representing Springfield Public Day Middle School. This is an amazing school with lots of features such as Fun Friday, school store, testing incentives, field trips, dress-down days, and bull buddies. Bull buddies is a help for motivation when we're testing and motivates us to keep working, try harder. Teachers, parents, and counselors have certain students that they cheer on and motivate for testing and schoolwork. My social studies teacher, Ms. Ely, is my bull buddy. We get dress-down once a week depending on our level. You have to pay a certain amount of bull bucks or get it free. If you're on top levels, you get it free. We have incentives to do such as Springfield College one-to-month for lunch. There is also school store with Ms. Trish, my counselor. On Thursday, she comes around with the menu. We circle the items we want and on Friday, we pay with their bull bucks and get it. We can get stress balls, pens, fidget cubes, et cetera. The last incentive is Fun Friday. It's fun for the whole school. For the last period of the day on Friday, depending on our level, we can choose to do something fun with a teacher like basketball games, art club, and speedball. In conclusion, Springfield Public Day Middle is a great place to be with hard-working students and many incentives. Thank you.
Nice job, Michael. I heard the food's pretty good at Springfield College, too, huh? The food pretty good at Springfield College is what I heard, too. You go lunch there? Good job, Michael.
Hi, I'm Ethan Resto.
How you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent, and school committee members. My name is Ethan Resto and I am in the seventh grade at Springfield Public Day Middle School. I wanted to let you know about some things that have been going on at my school. I am the student council and we are currently working on a pet drive for TJ O'Connor and bringing supplies such as food, toys, and basic leads for cats and dogs. Also, we have a level system at our school with PBIS and if you earn ninety percent of our points for the previous week, the next week, you get a free dress-down day. Choose your activity for Fun Friday: basketball, Xbox racing, art, and computers. Also, you can get to walk to the bathroom and get to water unexcorpedin. The last thing I wanted to talk about is bull buddies. Each staff in the building picks two to three students. They motivate us to do well on the upcoming task. I like getting personalized notes motivating me to do well.
Nice job, Ethan. Thank you. Okay, Springfield Renaissance is in the house. School Shane Dillon, AKA Dinosaur Boy, and Ruth Rosario. I say that because I know him since he was a little kid and he really liked dinosaurs. And Ruth Rosario, accompanied by Jenny Manfredi, Assistant Principal.
My name is Shane Dillon and I am an eighth grader from the Springfield Renaissance School. I am here with my Assistant Principal, Ms. Jenny Manfredi, and my fellow peer and student, Ruth. Before I begin, I just want to thank Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and everybody else on the school committee for allowing us to be here tonight representing our school. It truly is an honor. There are two topics we will be discussing with you tonight. We will briefly be talking about something we call Passage Portfolio and Site Seminar along with the Renaissance Ambassador Program. I will be starting this off with Site Seminar and ambassadors and Renaissance Student Voice. Every year at the Springfield Renaissance School, we host a worldwide expeditionary learning event called Site Seminar. Site Seminar is an event that will take place in April and the purpose of it is to demonstrate how we do school at Renaissance. This event is brought to any staff members in an expeditionary learning school or environment. At Site Seminar, teachers worldwide gather together to learn the school's aspects and the characteristics of the students and faculty at Renaissance. On display will be a wide variety of student work ranging from all the grades six to twelve. Over the two-day course, the teachers that join us are separated by the subject they teach and put into crews, a group they will be in for the two days of Site Seminar. They then will visit and inspect classes of the same subject to assimilate new ideas that they could use for their own class and in their school. Running these groups of educators are our very own Renaissance ambassadors. Renaissance ambassadors are the school's representatives. They are the voice of the school. At Renaissance, student voice is very respected and it counts. An ambassador can be any student ranging from grade seven to twelve. I am an ambassador myself and it truly is a great experience. Every ambassador presents their own point of view on how the staff and students run Renaissance and what it means to them. That is one of the many traits highlighting anyone hoping to be an ambassador or if you already are one. At Renaissance, the staff and administration count on them to give the school a confident voice and to articulate it with respect. The ambassadors at Renaissance get very explicit training to represent our school well. Those were two very important aspects we like to focus on because student work and student voice is cared and counted on because it helps to better improve our school every day. Thank you very much and I hope that you take with you the very things that make Renaissance what it is. Now, my fellow student will talk to you about Passage Portfolio.
Nice job, Shane. Ms. Rosario, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name's Ruth Rosario. At the Springfield Renaissance School, eighth and tenth graders must complete what we call a passage portfolio. Passage for eighth graders has to do with showing work from their middle school journey and experience. A passage includes a binder with laminated sheet protectors, cover page, three drafts for a personal statement, which is an object or an item that connects to your personal life and your life at Renaissance and how it helped you become the person you are today, and three different reflections showing pieces of work from your middle school life. You need three reflections, which is a total of nine drafts. Lastly, you need a letter to a high school teacher and practice resume showing why you think you are able to move onto high school. When creating your reflections in eighth grade, you have to show three qualities of Renaissance graduate, craftsmanship of quality, creative thinking and expression, and communication. For tenth grade, passage students complete more in-depth and independent work. The tenth grade passage consists of reflections, forty hours of community service, and a physical challenge, and a lot more. These two passages are very similar, but very different at the same time. Passage in eighth is the eighth grades right into high school and the tenth grades right into their final years of high school. You can either exceed on passage or not do so well, but it's the quality and the amount of work the students put in that matters in the end. Thank you all and have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Ruth. Good job. Southam Middle School's in the house. Exaria Rivera, accompanied by Daisy Ramon Davis, who's the assistant principal. Ms. Rivera, if I pronounced your first name wrong, please correct me.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and members of the school committee and other yeses. My name is Saida Rivera and I am a sixth grade student at Southam Middle School. This year, I have been working to strive for excellence by being responsible, respectful, and ready. I would like to highlight two specific things I have participated in this school year. The first one is the soccer team. Where I like the ball soccer was being new people and learning new skills. I learned the soccer, how to dribble the ball, and what my opponents would use against me. I had to build my speed and endurance. I'm a lot faster now and next year, when I participate in soccer, I'll do better. An event I participated in this school year was PBIS Bingo. This took place on the Friday before Christmas break. We had to earn eighty percent prepared stamps on our agenda for each class from November twenty-seventh to December fifteenth. To earn a prepared stamp, I had to have my agenda, homework, pencil, as well as being uniform. We gathered in the gym, had about ten different bingo cards and a ton of different raffles. The prizes were amazing. For example, board games, stuffed animals, candy, gift cards, and a virtual reality set. Unfortunately, I didn't win, but I had fun. Our newest PBIS incentive is an ice cream social. Each week in each class, I must determine one of the school's core values: be responsible, be respectful, and be ready. If I show the core values of each in each week in each of my classes, I earn a stamp. I must collect forty-eight stamps between January twenty-second to February ninth. Currently, I have thirty-six stamps. I am really looking forward to attending this event. I have learned that it pays to do the right thing every day. Finally, I would like to tell you about a few of my classes that I am taking this year. In social studies, I went on my first online field trip. We took a trip to California to see a hundred-year-old castle. We had a tour guide for this event. The castle was beautiful. In ELA, I learned how to slow down my reading to improve my understanding. I am also working on... I am also working on writing narratives which are stories. A good narrative has an opening descriptive detailed dialogue and a closing part. In math, I do a lot of partner work. It's better for me because my partner can help me on tasks I don't understand and we can also compare answers to see if we are correct. I also attend a daily class called Math Lab. In Math Lab, we review the lessons from our regular math class. This review was fun because we often play games. Thank you for allowing me to share my experience at Southam Middle School. It has been a pleasure to meet you all.
Nice job, Ms. Rivera. What position? I love that hair too. What position did you play in soccer?
Um, defense.
Okay, then. So I was a crazy goalie in high school and college, so you'd be protecting me. That's good. That's good. Good job. No problem, yeah. Do you have somebody to... Oh, okay. Hi, Dad. Why don't you come up here a little closer? This is a good interruption for the viewing audience. You got moxie, kid. I like that. Conservatory of the Arts is in the House, Quana Carter, who's been here before, accompanied by Oga Escalera, Teacher Instructional Leadership Specialist. Quana, come on down. Where's Quana? Just a little bit louder so we can... That's for the... Just a little bit louder. We want to hear what you two have to say.
Good evening. My name is Quana Carter. I am an eighth grader from Conservatory of the Arts. Tonight, we would like to talk to you about a new club at our school. It's called the Girls Who Code. Girls Who Code is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to the closing the gender gap in technology. Computing is where the jobs are, but at this time, only one in five computer science graduates are women. We are going to change that at the Conservatory.
Good evening. My name is Hennessy Ortiz. I'm a seventh grader at the Conservatory of the Arts. In our club, we know that being a programmer is more about than just coding. It's also about working together, solving big problems, and thinking creatively. As members of Girls Who Code, we strive to be brave and resilient and intellectually curious, emotionally intelligent, and socially just. Every Girls Who Code Club must complete its Computer Science Impact Project. Our club project is a website dedicated to our school's kindness initiatives. Our website is going to include a calendar of events, blogs, anti-bullying videos, short films, podcasts, video blogs, video games, activities, and ebooks. All of this will be created and managed by the forty-five students in our club.
Nice job, Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Carter? You're back.
I am also the Conservatory representative to Project Three Fifty-One, and I am planning to include on our website a crowdsourcing page based on random acts of kindness. Our crowdsourcing page will allow students to send messages, emails, and tweets about the acts of kindness they witnessed during the school day. The page will show on the school map where these acts are occurring so that we can celebrate the safe spaces in our school. I will also try to make the city of Springfield a page so that everyone in the city can text and tweet random acts of kindness that they see so that we work...
You're doing fine, Three Fifty-One. Congratulations on that too. You're doing fine.
So that the good works of the people in our city can be publicly celebrated. My classmates and I are looking forward to sharing our website with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Young men and young ladies, you did a wonderful job and all the school committee members are very, very proud of you. This is the best meeting of my day. And to the middle school representatives, I think we hit everybody, so that concludes that. You are more than welcome to stay if you'd like for our regular meeting, but we're very, very proud of you. Thank you so much. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Attorney Murphy, absent.
Present.
Ms. Perez?
Present.
Ms. Hirst?
Present.
Ms. Nayler?
Present.
Mr. Collins, absent.
Present for the record. Attorney Murphy is going to try to make it here from engagement. He could be running a little late. And Vice Chair Chris Collins, Christopher Collins, has a family engagement. He'll be unable to attend and sense his regrets. If we could all please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the Father, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. I know he'll be coming up here, but we're very honored and proud that our Sheriff of Hamden County, Nick Coche, has joined us. Sheriff Coche? We deeply appreciate the partnership we have with our school system and that'll be coming up in the next agenda, one of the next agenda items. Section two to approve the minutes of the January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen regular school committee meeting and the January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen school committee working session meeting. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hirst is her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nayler. All those in favor say aye. All those oppose? The ayes have it. Now moving to informational discussion items. A is to recognize Corporal Reginald Green of the Hamden County Sheriff's Department truancy officer for his actions on November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen to save the life of an unresponsive student struck by a vehicle. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to also recognize Sheriff Coche.
Sheriff Coche, come on down, please.
We so appreciate the cooperation from the Hamden County Sheriff's Department. They've assigned us excellent officers to work with us. I think it goes back, it must be seven, eight, nine, ten years now, we've been working together. And the officers they've assigned has been so helpful to us in so many ways, but this act of heroism was really special. And Reggie's just done a great job for us, but the whole team has. And we so appreciate the sheriff stepping forward, making sure they provide us the help with attendance. And attendance is a struggle in urban school districts. A real struggle and the kind of outreach and support to our families they've provided, getting out there in the community and getting our kids back on track and in school has been instrumental in a lot of the attendance gains we've had over the number of years. That's been a true spirit of cooperation. We're deeply indebted to your sheriff and the officers like Reggie have been just outstanding and a real reflection of your fine department. What Reggie did for this young student was incredible and a real act of heroism that is to be commended from all of us. So from the bottom of my heart, I just wanted to say thank you, Reggie.
Sheriff Coche, would you like to open up first and then...
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and the School Committee Board in allowing us to continue to be your partner. We see the great work that's being done in the schools with the truancy. We were talking, I was talking with Barbara earlier, we're talking about the follow-up. It's so important that we not only recognize the problem, but we also go to the houses, we bring the kids to school, we follow up to make sure that they're staying in school. Superintendent Warwick, I certainly at the end of every year sit down with Dan O'Malley and we talk about the dropping of the dropout rate and the raising of the graduation rate. So I just want to say congratulations to you and all of your staff and your wonderful teachers and thank you for allowing us to continue to be a partner with you in what I think is a great, great program. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I don't know if Superintendent Warwick or Sheriff Coche would like to first tell the viewing audience and the audience here what exactly Corporal Green, Reggie did.
Sure. Well, we're just so proud of Reggie. As he was in his car, he witnessed a around seven-year-old boy come across the street and get hit by an ongoing car. Reggie put his lights on, his overhead lights on, got out of the vehicle, went up to the injured person and noticed that he was unconscious. And he rendered CPR and medical care, revived him back to consciousness. And in between getting his hands around what just happened and trying to get the young boy some help, Mom and Dad saw the incident as well and they came and they scooped him up immediately and took him from the scene. So what we had is we had just a very heroic efforts on behalf of Corporal Green who, to no surprise of my own, after watching him over the past twenty-plus years and how he handled incidents inside the jail with people in crisis. So we're just very, very proud of Reggie, the work that him and Donnie, Donnie does a tremendous job as well. They're a tag team and along with the truancy staff for Springfield schools. We're just very, very proud of the work they do. And I want to thank Reggie for going above and beyond what sometimes people get nervous today to get out and render care. And I'm always encouraging our staff of eight hundred, you get out and you render care and you change someone's life hopefully for the better for the rest of their life. And I think that's what Reggie did on that day. And we're very, from the Sheriff's Department, we're very proud of you, Reggie.
Corporal Reggie, we'd like to have you speak. And I know other school committee members, we'd like to say a few words, but we want to hear from you and we're so deeply grateful for you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Thank you for having me and I really appreciate it. I'm very humbled by the situation. It's easy and I say that, you know, very lightly, that it's easy to help these kids out, especially when you love doing what you're doing because you stop the cycle and you help a kid out. And dealing with, we deal with in the Sheriff's Department and working collaborations with the school, it's a fine-tuned machine. And then we bridge the gap between us and the community and it helps out a lot. And I really appreciate dealing with the kids all the time because it just makes me feel good and it makes me feel whole and it brings me back full circle. So I just, I just really thank you for allowing me to have the chance to do that. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Reggie. Now, we have some comments from school committee members. If you'd like to make any comments. Ms. Gresham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say Corporal Green, thank you so much. You are a hero for saving that child's life.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Perez?
As a mom, I say thank you. No, I'm just thinking about the situation itself and just coming and saving this child. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Ms. Hirst?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the same sentiments as Mrs. Gresham and Ms. Perez. And as a mother and as a, as a parent who sends their child to school every single day, you just hope and pray that there are individuals out there just like you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Dillon?
And I just want to say thank you. I've watched you throughout the years, just doing a phenomenal job in the community and with our children and the passion that you bring to work every day is very noticeable. So keep doing what you're doing and thank you so much for all that you've done. I feel the same sentiments as the other moms. I have a daughter who's eight and so I think about the seven-year-old, so thank you.
Thank you.
Again, just to congratulate the Sheriff's Department, the officers that we've had the pleasure working with over the years have just carried out all their duties in such a marvelous manner and they're a credit to your department. Reggie exemplifies that day in and day out. Reggie, you've been, I think, with us back from the start, how many years now?
Going on nine.
Nine years, so yeah, yeah. We feel like you're part of the staff, but I think the entire team, the Sheriff's Department, our team, Bonnie Osgood, and the staff have worked collaboratively. And getting out there and getting kids back into school, and you're right, if we don't succeed in that endeavor, they're not going to graduate from high school and we're going to have a real problem on our hands. So you've really made a difference here in this roll and we so appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
First of all, to Sheriff Coche, the partnership has been invaluable. Not only, this has been a key component in the leadership of Superintendent Warwick and his administration staff and the teachers and our school committee members. Absolutely right. It's translated to attendance gains, more importantly, huge drops in dropout. And shortly, we'll announce very good, I can't say it yet, but very, very good increases in graduation rate. I have to say, as a young city councilor, this was one of my pet peeves, pursuing truancy, and we couldn't work it out. And then taking over as mayor, the key component was the Sheriff's Department in this. So Sheriff Coche, to you, whether it's this, leading the charge on the opioid crisis, leading the charge on rehabilitating individuals who have done wrong, but make them better coming on their streets, we deeply appreciate it and we commend you on that. It is very common to our first responders and it really irks me at times when none of us in public service mind any constructive criticism, but everybody wants to throw negativity or be Monday morning quarterbacks when it comes to all our first responders, whether it's the jail, our firefighters, our police officers. You do this and it's like aw shucks, no big deal. I was just doing the right thing. And that's what really we're in awe of. And Sheriff Coche was right. In this day and age, other people might have looked the other way, but in your head, your heart, your gut, the right thing to do. That's somebody's kid. That could have been my kid. Let's do the right thing here and we'll worry about any other circumstances that come about. You saved the young person's life. And I know you're, you could tell, I can tell you're blushing that you're quite embarrassed that you're getting honored here. But many a times in the media, in this age of reality TV, all we hear about is negativity, negativity, negativity. Good stories need to be and must be told. And tonight, Corporal Reginald Green, you are an outstanding story and we am deeply gratitude for what you did. So with that, we have an official plaque for you. Springfield Public Schools, Springfield, Massachusetts, Springfield School Committee, Superintendent Schools hereby recognizes Corporal Reginald Green for his heroic... You know, and another thing too, hero. It's a word that's misused all the time. Oh, he made a great catch on the field. He's a hero. And I can't say what I want to say. You're a hero. You're a hero.
Thank you.
For his heroic life-saving actions to save the life of a student on November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. This is presented on the first day of February two thousand and eighteen by myself, by Superintendent Warwick, all school committee members. Thank you so much. Come on down. Sheriff, thank you so much for taking the time to be here. Thank you. Thank you. Give me goosebumps. The good of the city of Springfield highlighted once again. Okay, speaking of good, Agenda Item B is City Connects Update. Superintendent Warwick, please.
City Connects is a program we brought in in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven modeled after a very successful program in the Boston Public Schools, Boston Connects, in collaboration with Boston College. And it's a way of intervening in schools and providing wraparound services that we know our students and their families need so badly, but too often, we haven't been able to connect families to services. In an urban center, we have a lot of families living in poverty. There are services available, but unless people actually help and make those connections, people don't seek out and get the benefit of those services. So some years back, we hired Julie to run this program here in Springfield. She's done an outstanding job in our first schools that were in City Connects, were our Level Four schools. City Connects was part of the process in improving those schools. But... City Connects was part of the process in improving those schools, but seven of those schools have exited Level 4 status and City Connects was a part of it. When you look at the data from City Connects, it's absolutely spectacular. What we've done for students, and the interesting thing like Boston is putting all the services in place, improve the behavior, improve the climate in the school, but the academic achievement also improved. So it's just been a wonderful program. We've been trying to add to the program every year and we've, we're in more sites than we originally started with. We're in 15 right now. We've been actively seeking grants. I think we're going to have a positive announcement about getting a major grant to fund more schools with City Connects very shortly. But it's been a program, there's some great data that Julie's going to share with you. Julie has also headed our efforts with positive behavior intervention supports and we have that in over 30 of our schools now. And I would share with you that the reason that all of our culture, climate, behavioral data has improved over the last several years is programs like this, proactive programs to improve supports for kids and improve the climate in schools for our kids that have really changed the behavioral pattern around and move things, move the needle in the right direction with all of our stats. But a few things that just struck out at me. Over 5,000 students getting services last year and over 35,000 services delivered to families through this program. And over 93 community partners, that just struck out at me. But I think some of the people who are looking at providing grants have looked at the data from this program and are very intrigued by it because the data is so great. So without further ado, I want to thank Julie for the great job she's done. And she's going to give you a little background on the program and a much better delve into the data. But it's been very positive for the city of Springfield. Thanks Julie.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick and members of the school committee. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you about City Connects. Tonight I will be giving a brief overview and a progress per on the implementation in our various schools. In your folders, you will see this nice little colored pamphlet. A lot of what I'll be saying is in this pamphlet as well. And also it says City Connects Blog. It's about a partnership that we have with the Mass Coalition of Homelessness. So I'm just going to start with the City Connects mission and I'm going to read it because it's very powerful to me and I'll explain why. City Connects' mission is to have children engage and learn in school by connecting each child with a tailored set of prevention, intervention and enrichment services that she or he needs to succeed and thrive. City Connects is a model that's all-inclusive and comprehensive, which assists all students no matter their level of need. It's a very proactive preventative model that we've implemented in. These are the list of schools. And as you can see, the asterisk indicates the schools that started in 2011 and 2012 with the Race to the Top funding. Over the course of the six years, we've added schools each year. And the decision to add these schools is based on the school data. We looked at sped rate, we looked at MCAS data, attendance data. So that's, and then in commerce, I just want to say that we're only in the ninth grade because it's the highest level of need that we feel. Okay, so what do we do? We identify each child's unique strengths and needs and developmental areas, which are the health, family, social, emotional and academic. We develop a service plan for each child, working with the family and the school and community agencies. We connect them to the tailored set of prevention, enrichment, early intervention or crisis services in the community. And then we follow up by, we track them in a, in a database that we have. And then we evaluate to see the effectiveness of that, of that service. And this is just kind of like a visual of what we do. Every student, every teacher, every year. So we start with the review of every student, which we call the whole class review. The coordinator and the teacher meet to discuss every student in that classroom based upon those strengths and needs that I mentioned. Out of the whole class review, an individual student review may, may come, which we call here in Springfield as our stat process. Usually students who are tiered in a Tier 3 are given a stat team, multidisciplinary, and I'll explain that in a minute. Out of both of those processes, a proposed plan comes in place where we work with the families and community partners. And then we just have that feedback loop, making sure that they're getting the services that they need, that it's the right service and how the school can, can help. Maybe there's a treatment plan and how the school could really actually help to be part of that plan. So at the heart of City Connects is our City Connects Coordinator. And basically what they do is, their responsibilities include facilitating that whole class review, facilitating stat meetings, building relationships with families and community partners, talking to staff, collaborating with staff and reaching in data, data entry too. And I actually have one of my fantastic coordinators here with me, Ms. Mantia. And she's actually from commerce.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so here's what the whole class review, it's just in a nutshell. So the City Connects Coordinator does what I call the whole class reviews and it's between October and December. So they're very busy during those, those months, gathering data and meeting with the teachers to discuss the strengths and needs across those four areas. The students are tiered based upon their level of need. And then we do our outreach, we talk to families, we try to find the right service for that student at the right time. So last year, we did 96% of students received a whole class review in all of those 15 schools. Here's what the stat process looks like. So the City Connects Coordinator facilitates the stat, which is a multidisciplinary, disciplinary team that convenes to discuss the intensive needs of the student. We develop SMART goals, we talk about strategies and interventions that could be put in place for the student and those that are responsible for carrying out those interventions and strategies. Then in six to eight weeks, we come back and do a follow-up and make sure that those goals may need to be tweaked or maybe they've been met. And then, so in 2016, last school year, 9% of our students serviced by City Connects received an individual student review. And according to City Connects, we actually beat Boston with that percentage. So that's a very good, I'm always in competition with Boston. Okay, so Superintendent Warwick mentioned this. So over the 15 schools, we serviced 5,000 students. We connected them to 35,000 services and enrichment opportunities and we have 93-plus community partners that we are in contact with daily. And basically, these are kind of like the buckets of services, the enrichment prevention, early intervention, crisis intervention services. And 100% of our students have received at least one service. 93 of our students received three or more services. And that is a huge percentage that is really, really good. So here are some examples of what those buckets kind of look like. So prevention and enrichment services could be sports activities, finding music lessons for students. Early intervention services could be mentoring or tutoring. And intensive is more of the family stabilization, crisis intervention. So those are the breakdowns. As you can see, a lot of the prevention and enrichment and early intervention services is where most of our services were referred for. So it's again, that prevention, preventative kind of model that we're working on. And here are some community, examples of community partner based upon services delivered by service labels. So all coordinators know about what these service labels are, so I'll, I'll explain some of them. So enrichment academic means that they were referred for an outside after-school program that has an academic component to it. Attendance support, so a lot of our coordinators are involved in the attendance initiative within the school. They do a lot of, a lot of work with that. Classroom-based social skills intervention, so a lot of our coordinators will go in and teach lessons around social, emotional learning. Sports activities, parent-family engagement and check-in with the City Connects Coordinator. So sometimes the City Connects Coordinator just has a daily check-in or a weekly check-in with, with students that might be on their caseload. And you can see mentoring is at 4%. I think that is one of our, our gaps in service and we've seen that over the course of the years. So here's some examples of community partners and I'm going to tell some great stories. So action-centered tutoring has actually grown because of City Connects. And they have, they do one-to-one tutoring with students. They provide snacks, they provide a little of the mentoring. It's an excellent program. Bert Hanson, I'll give a shout-out to because he's a great partner that we have. The Family Resource Center is, is excellent as well. Reader to Reader is a nonprofit organization that we have what we call Book Your Vacation. So they, they donate books and so students are able to pick a book right before vacation. They also do what we call like an adopt a classroom. So they are associated with one of our colleges and students adopt like the fifth grade class. They read a book together and then they discuss it over several weeks. And then we have what I called your attention to the, to the City Connects Blog is Bed for Every Child. Stephanie Sanabria at the Early Childhood Center is one of my coordinators and has really worked really closely with the Massachusetts Homeless Coalition to bring beds. We have, we're stored at one of our facilities in Springfield. And our students, when we find that there's a need, usually due to fire or beds are damaged or students are sleeping on the floor, we, we put them in contact with Stephanie. And Stephanie gets them these beds and they come with a box spring, a bed, books and sheets. So it's, it's really interesting how that all kind of comes together to service our, our kids. And then the various counseling agencies, we, we, we spread the wealth there. So this is a slide and statistics that I'm very proud of because, you know, principals are responding positively, teachers are responding positively about the process of City Connects. And then our partners are really, really happy with what City Connects is and how they have that one contact person within the school that helps to give them referrals, but also some information that sometimes can get lost. And that's, that's the presentation.
Any questions or comments from school committee members? Ms. Hirsch?
I want to use, I want to use our new fancy mics. So Julie, great job. And I've seen Julie present at the MAS C conference and she did an amazing job when she was there. But I also just want to thank the superintendent because as we know, when the Race to the Top grants dried up and they were no longer available, you still made the commitment to, to fund those City Connects programs in, in a lot of schools. And I think it's so key that we have this program, especially as a social worker, considering all of the different dynamics that our kids have to deal with day in and day out. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Denise. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gresham?
Julie, thank you so much. Very good presentation. So now if you have students that come in after December, how do we capture those?
So that's a very good question. We still do the whole class review. So we let them adjust to their school, we let the teacher, you know, learn about them. So probably four weeks after they arrive after, in December, we do a whole class review with the teacher and we add them into the database.
Okay. And does all the schools that's listed, they have a coordinator?
Correct.
Good. Very good.
15 coordinators.
Wonderful.
May I say something as well?
Yes, personally.
I want to give a shout-out to Maggie at White Street. She is amazing. And just firsthand, watch some of the things that she's been able to do there. And Superintendent, one of the things that I absolutely admired was a lot of the things that they came up with for the students that were challenged, they actually expanded to the entire classroom. So the kids that are being challenged don't feel like they're being picked on or singled out. All of the kids do the same type of structure with the happy faces or whatever it is. And so, you know, the first year, you know, a student that I know very closely had to experience it, but then the next year, the siblings both were doing it and it was like, yeah, because even though she's a good kid, we wanted her to feel like, you know, this was something that everybody is doing and the same thing with the boys. So I think that's, really speaks volumes about the success of what you're doing on an individual basis, but also on a, on a school basis. So kudos to you definitely Superintendent. Thank you so much for supporting this and continuing to find resources to make sure that this program can continue.
I just hats off to Julie because she's absolutely done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
And every day she works with our counseling department that's part of this process. And Dr. Yolanda Johnson is here today to support the effort because our counselors are doing outstanding work with the City Connects workers, really as a team, day in and day out. And a lot of the great efforts we've had on graduation and dropout, Yolanda's been a big part of and I think we're about to have some more good news on that. So wanted to call out Yolanda on that one now. Thank you. I think it's these kinds of proactive programs that has been, have been meeting student needs. And it's all, excuse me, it's also, we've, we've had very positive data gains relative to suspensions, expulsions, that whole kind of thing because of the positive interventions meeting the kids' needs and, and actually getting out to the community and making sure we're meeting the family needs. So it's a proactive approach that, that I'm very proud of, but the staff has done a great job and kudos to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick. Ms. Perez?
I just want to thank you in looking at the data and looking at the collaboration and the night workings that you do in the community. I personally have seen it, the creativity around the students is amazing. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Julie, I have to say, and Superintendent keeps me under wraps about that graduation, I can't wait to make that announcement. But two things, I'm very familiar with the, of the beds program. It happened to be an event at PPW and how people take things for granted, how important that is for students or children to have, have a bed. And plus other things come with it and bear, so that, that's very heartfelt. The second point, this and the continued efforts of the school department play a pivotal role as Commissioner Barberi and I announced just the other day of the drop in the crime rate the last five years, the preventative, preventative aspect. I mentioned that, the work that we're doing pre-K, City Connects. So some of these young people, no matter what creed, color, background, who might be starting to go the wrong way, are grabbed in a diplomatically respectful, aggressive way to say there's a better way to go. So again, for any urban mayor, that, that knocks down that vicious cycle of poverty and it knocks down public safety issues. It's all connected. Said that with our police officers, they cannot do everything. We want the bigger percentage to be on the preventative proactive work. And it is paying dividends. So Julie and your team, we really, really, really appreciate that immensely. Congratulations. Thank you.
City, you are connecting.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now go to reports of standing committees, student relation, parent concerns.
No reports, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Gresham. B is Building and Maintenance Committee. I think that's Mr. Collins who's unable to attend tonight. C is Legislative and Contracts Committee. I think that's Peter. D is Curriculum and Programs Committee.
No, no report at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. E is Budget and Finance, that's Vice-
E is Budget and Finance, that's Vice Chair Collins, who unfortunately unable to attend tonight. F is Vocational Education Committee.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. G is Technology Committee. I believe that's Mr. Attorney Murphy's unable to attend this evening. And H is School Safety Committee.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. I know you worked very hard on that committee. Report to the superintendent. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, you're going to see an attendance report that's this current year as compared to last year through January, and you're going to see that there's a slight improvement in attendance. We're up to 93.1 percent. Had some nice gains in attendance over the years. It's nice to see we're up a little again this year. And attendance for us is a real battle, day in and day out. The folks are actually going out to the homes, bringing kids in, reconnecting them to services. Every school's reaching out and connecting to every family every day when there's someone out, so it's nice to see that the trend is up again in that arena. You can see another battle we have here that our unexcused rate is up this year. So that's again, us getting out, making those connections with families when kids are out, and try to find out the reasons and getting them back into school. But the overall trend's in the right direction. If you go through the packet, you can see nice gain this year at the elementary level in both zones, one and two, and a nice gain in zone three at our middle schools and high school. But, you know, when you can see the lowest rate is in the early childhood program. It always struck me that that's such a problem, but we have a lot of half-day early childhood programs, and the attendance piece has been a struggle for us there, and we're continuing to work on it. And the reason we need to really work on it is those patterns that develop early on in pre-K, K, they carry on through school. So that's something we continue to work on. Obviously, there's no enforcement at that age level. But again, what we try to do is get those parents engaged because that's a parent issue, and really try to get out there and educate the parents to get them to start sending to school regularly because it's so important. And when we go into stat teams Julie was talking about earlier, 95 percent of the students who are struggling, when you look at, because I served on a stat team for years, attendance was part of it. It's something we really have to tackle as a community, but with the community support, we've improved it. But it's a struggle every day, and we need to do better in that arena. Relative to students from Puerto Rico, there's been a lot in the press about students from Puerto Rico, and the good news is there was something in the press relative to funding on the students from Puerto Rico because we've been fighting for that, and we have some good news on it. But I'm very, very proud of the work the staff has done. We have taken in 628 students from Puerto Rico here in Springfield.
Mostly Commonwealth.
There's like 2,450 in the Commonwealth, so 25 percent right here in Springfield. And there is, you know, a transient nature to this, but we have almost 500 still with us. So the student, many of the students are staying on, and in every school, we've been providing the kind of services they need. But we weren't surprised with the ELL services and the great need in that arena. We expected that. And, you know, a few years ago, when we put the ELL program into every school, providing the services out there and the ESL support and the retail training, it's bearing fruit now because the kids have come in throughout the entire city, and we folded them into our programs. We created a special testing center at PACE so we can actually test them as they come in, so we can give them their ESL prescription right out the school, once we assign them to the school, so that they get those ESL services right away. What we were surprised by is the high percentage of the students who came in that were in special education. Our average in Massachusetts is high, the highest in the country at 20 percent. But we, the students we've been receiving, the numbers that were receiving some special ed services in Puerto Rico was almost 40 percent. So that has put a strain on a lot of services in the schools relative to the special needs services. And most of those students have come in without the kind of paperwork we need, so we've got to try to work with the schools on the island, try to get that paperwork, and try to start running all those team meetings and everything else to get the services in place. So it's been a challenge, but I'm really proud of the great job the staff has done and the school system has done to support these families. And also, I think the entire city has rallied around this, the New North Citizens Council and so many other people, to provide the kind of services for the families. So things are going well out there. We had some good news on funding today. They're talking about $15 million in funding.
Supplemental.
The governor put forward, Carlos Gonzalez actually gave me a call today on it, and talking about $15 million. And it was actually exactly what we asked for for funding. It was the per pupil Chapter 70 funding, which is the right thing. So if we get the per-student formula, we'll get the benefit from that. Just dividing the dollars through the different districts wouldn't be fair. It really has to be a per-student appropriation to make it appropriate, so that's what's occurring today. So if we get that funding, it'll allow us to provide some more services out in the schools and provide support and provide some help with the whole special ed piece of this issue that's been a challenge for us. So really good news today, and hopefully we'll get that funding in. And if we can get that funding guaranteed for next year, we can actually do the allocations for those schools and build the services in where the kids have landed, rather than just stretching out our already services. So we've had increases in class size, increase in the ESL classes. We could actually plan and put those services in place and have them to open the year. So that would be a real gain for our kids and our families, and, you know, we'll do an even better job with everybody. We're stretched a little thin right now, but people are doing a good job.
I know today, Ms. Gresham, with your Head Start division on the Black Heritage Flag Raising, I met a couple families, young kids from Puerto Rico. Head Start. I know you had a question, Ms. Gresham.
So Superintendent, so when they come into PACE and they do the testing, that tells you whether they are academically?
Tells you the language needs. Most of the kids are coming in with ESL needs.
Okay.
And then we can actually send them out to the school with that testing done, so they can begin to put the services in place immediately. Most of the kids need an ESL prescription for services and a certain amount of ESL services every day, as well as to be placed with a retail, a homeroom teacher or a classroom teacher who's trained in retail. So if we have that coming in, we know how to place the students and can put the services in place right away, rather than trying to send language testers out to all the schools as they came in. Paul Foster helped me. We put the center in place with Pat Spadely, right at the PACE Center, at the point of entry, do the testing right away and get the information out to the schools. It just was a more efficient way to get it done and make sure we're providing the right services for the kids. So that's how we organized it.
And again, I want to thank the school committee woman, Perez, Maria, and Jose Claudio, and Maria Legas of the New North Citizens Council. I had asked them to be the point organization, to be able to facilitate to all the proper resources, and they've done a tremendous job to help our brothers and sisters in Puerto Rico land on their feet, whether they decide to stay here or go back to their beautiful island. But everybody involved, and especially our school system.
Yes.
Really, really stepped it up, and we're hopeful that supplemental Governor Baker's put in for $15 million. Under Superintendent Warwick, hit it right ahead, must be under the formula, must translate under the formula, that'll be key. But from my office, Chief of Staff Denise Jordan, Minnie Marrero, Gladys Orio, I can go on, not everybody. Springfield really, with its natural man-made disasters, this disaster really rallies together, and people see that and commend us. So we're here for them and their families and to get them through this tumultuous time. So thank you, Superintendent, to you and your team and everybody else, we deeply appreciate that. Ms. Hirsch?
A question. Superintendent, is that potential funding going to potentially go into Chapter 70 for this fiscal year or for the following?
The way I understand it, it's for next fiscal year, but they're going to give us some support funding for this year. Because we're actually planning our allocations and organizations now for next year. So you don't build in the services, it's going to be very hard. But they're going to give us some support funding now. That's the way I understand it, but I didn't see what actually passed today. So that's my understanding. And that's the most important piece for us. We need to know what we're going to have for next year if we're going to organize appropriately around it. So that's really important. And then get some short-term funding out there to provide some supports for the students and schools.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Any other questions or comments on that subject?
I just want to make sure that we capture the social-emotional part of the students.
There's no question that whole trauma piece is significant. I'm sure you've seen it at Head Start. A lot of the kids come in needing services, and families have endured a lot of trauma. So a lot of the wraparound services, we were just talking about, our counselors, our City Connects teams, that's all a big piece of that. When I ever saw the, like I said, I wasn't a bit surprised with the ELL services that were needed, but when I ever saw the percent of kids in the trauma and the special needs, that did surprise me. Massachusetts has a great reputation, Springfield has a great reputation for special ed services, and I think we were a magnet for families, you know, where they had students that had those kind of needs. But it, you know, it was really significant. And that's why the Chapter 70 appropriation has extra money per student for ELL because obviously it costs a lot more, but also for sped, which costs significantly more. And that's why that, the funding coming in that way was most important to us.
And again, Superintendent Warwick's had the Assistant Superintendent Lydia Martinez as a point person on that, and that's one of the, that's one of the big subjects that came up, the counseling.
Yes.
For that. Any other questions?
I'm actually glad you just mentioned that because Assistant Superintendent Lydia Martinez was at the Governor's Latino Advisory Commission hearing, and she spoke to that, and she was the very first one to ask, you know, specifically, or say specifically what it was that we needed as a district. And she spoke to the Chapter 70 funding and the fact that we might not see it until fiscal year 20 if we don't, you know, if we don't get it, or if the legislature doesn't appropriate it.
Yeah, that's a really good point. Because they came in after October 1st, actually we wouldn't get any money this year, but we also wouldn't get any money next year unless there was special legislation. And that was the most difficult challenge relative to the financial piece. But it's looking good right now, but I appreciate everyone. And we, you know, we've done a lot to, you know, educate our legislative delegation on what the proper ask is, and they were very, very supportive. We sent them information out after we talked here at the school committee, and everybody was saying the same message. It really needs to be the Chapter 70 appropriation because that's the fairest way to appropriate funds for public schools, and it would be the most beneficial to this school system because of the numbers of students that have come in and the complex needs.
Right, yeah.
So that was a big one, and we did get good information out to everyone on that, and it's coming in our way. So thank the legislative delegation.
Governor Baker and the delegation, delegation was just in for the monthly meeting Friday in my office, and that was one of our, through TJ Plant, that was one of our points about the funding and how it needs to translate into the Chapter 70 formula, and they heard us loud and clear. So we're very appreciative of Governor Baker and our legislative delegation for getting that through. Any other questions on the Puerto Rican relief pertaining to Hurricane Maria?
Sure, ma'am.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you. You know, we went to this unexpectedly. It was not, we weren't not prepared, and I've seen how prepared we came when the community, the Wellcome Center, we all came together from the social aspect to the educational aspect, and as a family, you know, we were able to come through. And I personally say thank you because, you know, it has been a struggle and continue to be, but because of this networking collaboration as a family, I think that's why the majority of the students land up in Springfield because of the, regardless, we work as a family. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maria. And again, the New North Citizens Council, we appreciate that. Any other questions or comments pertaining to the Puerto Rican relief on Hurricane Maria? Okay, hearing them, we'll go back to Superintendent Warwick's report.
Yeah, we had a very positive meeting last night down in the north end on Brightwood and Lincoln School that Maria helped us host at Lincoln School to talk about the new proposed facility in the north end. And the community came out, and it was very good support. That's our third community meeting on that issue now. Just this year, we met last year as well. So the community outreach has been great, the discussions have been great. We've been working with the Mass School Building Authority on moving the project forward. It's always a challenge when you work with sometimes state bureaucracies on getting the funding because the amount of paperwork required and the amount of meetings required is a big challenge. We have another meeting next week on it, but it's going very well, and the support from the community has been great, and we thank Maria for helping host it and make sure we had interpreters so we could listen to the community and what they want. But this, if we can pull it off, it can be a very positive development, I think, for the north end of Springfield, but the entire city of Springfield, because again, those buildings were built in 1898 and 1910. So that we've had to explain to the School Building Authority as many times as we have why they need to be replaced is interesting, but we're getting there, and it's moving along in a positive direction. And we're also going to have a meeting next week to talk about enrollment numbers for another project that's an important one for us, for the Homer and DeBary. Homer was again built in 1898 and is, you know, long overdue for a new school. So we're going to, we're working with them on those numbers also. We're probably getting a little more pushback because of the number of projects we've had, but we have great need because we, in the urban centers, have really old antiquated facilities that no longer meet the educational needs in the 21st century. You know, two of these schools were built in the 1800s.
You know, if I may say too, and I'm sure Ms. Perez is going to comment, we appreciate you facilitating that meeting. I think it was reported on one of the media outlets, and in Springfield, we've done nearly $700 million of new schools and physical plant improvements for our schools. I think it was 30 years they have not built, I think it was City Hall, 30 years they have not built a new school.
Wow.
30 years, for whatever reason. But I'm just saying, you know, what we've been able to accomplish here has been tremendous. And I'm sure Ms. Perez, again, we thank you for facilitating. I mean, you might want to say a few things pertaining to the Lincoln-Brightwood combination.
Well, the people in the community is very excited. And last night, we have parents, and I was telling Mrs. Gresham, the questions that they asked was valid questions. And everyone is excited about this new development, and it was very well-attended last night. So the community responded very well last night, and the parents, and the parents had a lot of valid questions when it comes to this new development.
Thank you for getting that crowd out there.
Yeah, because we're in that stage where if we hear parent concerns and what they're looking for, we can build it into the project. So we've had a lot of really good feedback and really good ideas, and we're in that stage where we can modify the project. So it's really helpful. So thank you very much, Ms. Perez. A couple other quick things. I think we had some good items in the news, and I put the article, copy of the articles in your package, but the State of the Commonwealth address, we had two of our kids from STEM Middle School, Miguel Torres and Ashanti Rosario, down there with their wonderful principal, Louis Martinez, giving the pledge of allegiance in English and Spanish, and that was absolutely wonderful. It was a great article. It's absolutely fabulous. And then during the State of the Commonwealth address, Governor Baker also talked about the empowerment school. He has met some of the teachers that work in the empowerment schools and been very impressed, particularly with Tammy Grimes at Commerce who's been with us for years, and Evan Christner at Duggan, who do a great job. And, you know, he's been very excited. And I think it's a good third way in the Commonwealth where it was all public school or all charter, to have something that wasn't a charter school as another option to guide out with increasing achievement, I think is very valuable. And it's being looked at throughout the state and throughout the country. So there's a great article in on that. And the last one is on our early childhood programming. We've had a great partnership through our PEG grant, a $14.3 million grant over the last, we have our last year coming up, the fourth year. We've provided a lot of great services for our students and our families. Head Start's been a big part of it, along with Square One and the YMCA, and it's been a public-private partnership relative to providing full-day services and supports for our families. But we know in the urban centers how important early childhood education is. We did, we just did a study, and I'm going to share it with the school committee, on the state of readiness of our five-year-olds coming into kindergarten, and it's alarming at the low state of readiness for success in kindergarten. So we need to provide these high-quality services, not just daycare, but high-quality education services with a daycare to provide a need, and I think the partners, and it's been a true been a true partnership here in Springfield. We run our public classes. We actually are sharing a building, the Early Childhood Center, that we made available with Head Start, Square One, actually sharing practices in the YMCA. First of all, sharing our coaches, sharing our curriculum, to provide better outcomes for our kids. And there's some really promising research, support, and data that showing where we're running the higher-quality programs, the kids are coming into kindergarten with a better level of readiness. But there's a lot more to be done in that arena. But I think we're doing more here in Springfield than anyone. And I think the public-private partnership's been unique. And Tom Weber, the Commissioner of Early Childhood Education, was out here last week. And we have another year with this grant. But long-term, the state has to find a funding formula, especially in these urban centers, to provide quality early childhood education, because the research around it is so strong. But it was a very nice article in the paper. I included that for you as well.
I'd have to say, with that, early on in the administration, the Davis Foundation report, that we all went to a presentation at the Basketball Hall of Fame, some eight, nine, maybe almost 10 years ago now. And they showed the percentages of the old line, pay me now or pay me later, and that the money has sunk up, sunk in upfront. I think it was like a 38 percent increase in positive movement for our kids. And it was sunk after the fact, or tail end, it flatlined. So we've heard that loud and clear in purchasing from the Early Childhood Center. Again, first-of-its-kind collaboration. It's being looked at not only in state, but in the country with the public-private, Barbara Shop, Head Start, Joan Kagan with Square One, The Y with Dexter, and our, our team on that. And we, the point, the Commissioner Weber that we put forward is that we have, he gets, he gets it, and we're trying this funding, that you have to get to our young kids and families that wraparound services very, very early on, so they can succeed moving on. And the last thing is with Governor Baker. He'll pick up the phone and call me a number. And he was, he reached out and had asked, I love to have some students down at the State of the State from Puerto Rico, and also coming to one of our MLK events at the Mass Mutual Center. He was very impressed with the choir, Freedom Choir that we had there. And he said, I'd like to have them come down, and they rock the place down there. He, they do use the empowerment zone and some other initiatives Superintendent has put forward as examples all the time throughout the state. And even we had the Governor of Delaware came in to see how this works. So it's a good feeling. We don't, we want to do more. But the pre-K, I think we have about 285 more slots.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if we weren't able to open that pre-K center, we wouldn't have been able to really fully utilize that PEG grant, because we wouldn't have the space.
Yeah.
Because the space has been a huge problem. So, you know, the mayor's stepping up, and I think I gave him a 45-minute notice.
We put that deal together in 45 years.
Yeah. So as we were in danger of, you know, losing that facility, having it closed down, was, was absolutely huge. And I think anyone who goes there, or if anyone in the school community that hasn't seen it wants to see it, it's really a state-of-the-art early childhood program with some public classes, three, three sets of vendors using private services. And then we have the early Head Start model for the younger toddlers as well. It's an absolutely fabulous program, and probably the best in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
School committee members, you should feel good, because you'll have parents or grandparents or family come to you that if we didn't make this move, their child was on a wait list. They couldn't get into a school, which sometimes affects the family, saying, I can't go to work, or I can't work full-time. The domino effects on this have been extremely positive.
And again, the research, taking a look at the readiness levels, less than 10 percent of the kids entering K last year had the readiness skills to succeed in kindergarten.
That's correct.
So we absolutely have to do more to improve that. And these are the kind of programs that will get it done. So I appreciate the committee's support adding early childhood. We've doubled our public early childhood class in the last 10 years. And we're focusing on providing different kinds of services and trying to provide more full-day services in dealing with the space constraints we have doing that. So I appreciate the school committee's support with that.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick. Any questions of Superintendent Warwick's report? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to unfinished business. Hearing none, we'll move to new business.
Business. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Gresham.
A couple of weeks ago, the Public Health Institute of Western Mass did a survey, a self-reported survey on mental health of the eighth-grade students. And the numbers are alarming, especially the children that felt sad and homeless, I mean hopeless. So I was wondering, and most of our students, eighth graders, are under the empowerment zone.
Right.
Oh, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Probably about 80 percent or 75 percent, somewhere around that.
Yes. So they did this according to race, gender, and ethnicity. So I was wondering if Empowerment Zone can come to us and give us an update as to what resources they have in place for these students that's feeling sad and hopeless. They even talked about suicide, attempted suicide. So we would really like for them to come and let us know what resources they have for these students.
And then just a quick piece, some of the schools have City Connects.
Okay.
And the others all have the counseling services. Like our schools, they still have a lot of those school adjustment counselors.
Right.
We have a school adjustment counselor in every school in Springfield, and that's a, they're trained on the mental health side, not the guidance counseling programming side.
All right.
So those are some of the things that, that are being done out in the schools. But we can arrange for a report as well.
Yeah.
Yes, that I think we need to know.
Just to reassure the.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Any other new business at all? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Motion by Ms. Hurst, is her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. All those in favor say aye. The ayes have it. Go Patriots! Good evening, and thank you for watching.